So we have several members of Cricket's family on Zoom, so I'm gonna hold the microphone so you can speak into it, otherwise I won't be able to hear what the proclamation says. There's other duties as assigned as the town manager.
Microphone holder. Okay. Wow. Okay, that just sums it up right there, doesn't it? You want me to do that? Okay, the Town of Loomis Certificate of Recognition to Cricket Struck. Whereas Cricket Struck is a longtime resident of Loomis, she has been active in both community and professional service organization, and has been a member of the City Clerks Association, League of California Cities, Northern California Cities Clerks Association, National Notary Association, National Association of Partalimentarians, and the Loomis Lions, and whereas Cricket is the epitome of the public servant, she cares about her community, she cares about providing the best possible service to anyone who comes into Town Hall, she cares that she is able to work amicably and well with her fellow employees, she does it well and always with a smile.
It's not hard for you.
No, it isn't. And whereas Cricket Struck was elected Town Clerk in 1996, and since that time she has served at six consecutive terms, 25 years today. New council members in Loomis knew Cricket would be ready to guide them through their new role and provide them with necessary information and support to be the best council member they could be. Cricket worked with 27 council members during her time at Town Hall, and continuously went out of her way to be kind. I know that's true. She proved to be the best travel buddy, and more than one council member has stated that they don't know how they could have done their job without Cricket having their back. And whereas, for the past 33 years Cricket was a dedicated employee for the Town of Loomis, beginning with her employment with the town on August 15, 1988, she has carried the job titles of clerk typist, planning secretary, deputy town clerk, code enforcement officer, town clerk, administrative service officer. Cricket earned the prestigious designation of certified municipal clerk April 26, 2002. Her positive impacts on the employees, elected officials, and citizens of the Town of Loomis as a coworker, friend, supporter, sidekick, shoulder to lean on, and confidant are immeasurable. And whereas Cricket has been an integral part of our town concert series year after year, she has invited to the stage many bands and musicians that have kept us entertained, served countless watermelons to the crowds, and she and her husband John have jitterbugged their way into all of our hearts. And whereas Cricket has been more than an employee for the town, she has been a friend to all of us. She has been a sounding board, she has been a mentor to the town managers, she has been the steady influence needed when times were rough, and she has been a champion of the town. Her impact has helped to define the town. Now therefore, it is hereby proclaimed by the Town Council of the Town of Loomis that we express our sincere thanks and gratitude to Cricket Struck for her 33 dedicated years of employment with the Town of Loomis. She has left an indelible mark on the hearts of all, she has touched that will leave an everlasting impression on the employees and residents of Loomis.
I'd love to have the council with me, too. Is there a picture I can have all you guys together here?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't gonna cry because I've been crying so much. This is easy for me.
I know.
Oh, great.
You can come back to work.
I'm doing a book with Shutterfly on my experience here, but I want all the pictures I can get. I gotta have all you guys in here.
Hi, there we go.
Who are we looking at?
Can you skip this way though?
Which way?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Very nice.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Now you get my sassy emails.
I'm so happy to be out there and watching you. Oh my goodness, another one!
So, just to get your hands full?
Yes, look at that. I'll let you hold it.
Okay.
Now what does it say?
Okay, this one is "In appreciation for 33 years of dedicated service. You have gone above and beyond in your role as Town Clerk. You have been a valued colleague and dear friend, and have made an indelible impact on this community. Congratulations on your retirement."
Oh.
Thanks. So I'm sure that most people here, if not all people here, are gonna wanna say some words, so you could probably just hang out and let us celebrate you properly. We also have cake and cookies, so we'll do that at the end of this. I think if it's okay with council, I guess we'll go around the council and then...
Go and sit down.
Yeah. The last time we did this on the staff side, I tried to do a little bit of a speech, and I literally couldn't say anything, ended up choking up and couldn't speak, so I hope I'm gonna be able to keep it together by the end, so we'll go ahead and get started with that.
So Cricket?
Yes.
Jenny and I were recently elected, this was 11 months ago, and so being new to the office, there's some catching up to do from a historical perspective, right? So there's many issues that we deal with today that had their roots many years ago. So it's important to have a good resource of that historical knowledge, and that's what I've leaned on you for, and you've been excellent to me. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Cricket, you have just been an amazing person to work with, and I'm relatively new to working in the public, and having you there for us has just been an amazingly wonderful thing for me. I could not have even done it without you. Every step of the way, from should I run, and all the great bits of advice that you gave me in terms of what I might expect, and the good and the bad, and the wonderful, and our wonderful town, and... You are a treasure in our town, and thank you so much for every single second that you've spent. And I could go on and on, and I'm just so excited about your retirement, that you get to spend time with your family, that I know love you so much. And she's amazing, and the amount of years that you gave to our town is just incredible. And I consider you a dear friend, who I hope we can remain in touch, and again, I'm just so happy and thank you for everything you've done for me and for our town, and just for everybody that you've touched. Thank you.
Thank you.
So you know that I love public speaking, isn't that what you said?
Yes.
I just wanna thank you for all those years. I've worked with you just a few months as council, but many, many years through the chamber, and you've just been such a valuable part of Loomis. And I'm not gonna miss you, 'cause I'm gonna bring you over to the senior center and we're gonna work together still.
Yes, we are.
And we're still gonna go have some lunches together.
Yes.
And I'll call you if I have any questions, so I'm just so proud of you. Thank you for what you've done.
Okay.
So I gotta say, when I first decided to throw my hat in this wonderful arena, and I served on the Planning Commission, you always were very good at advice, and now looking back at it, I don't know how I would have done it without you, and listening to the list of your accomplishments here within the town, I don't know how the town would have done it without you. Dealing with 27 council members, I don't know how anybody does that. I really don't. I mean, we've had some really good ones, and we've had some difficult ones, and so I just look, and the amount of work that you've done for the town, you really do epitomize public service. The town is in the position that it is in, because you have been there and have just been a stalwart champion for this town. So I can't thank you enough. I'm gonna miss your sassy emails to me, and my very calm responses, and your jumpiness in Town Hall, but we'll see each other, but I really do appreciate all that you have done for me personally as a council member, so thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
I gotta tell Cricket, oh, what's going on? You know, she could be a psychologist, because I came in to this, like Brian said, the Plan Commissioner, I became a Plan Commissioner, and I would talk to her all the time. But I started talking to her about my past history in prison, and she would listen, and then after a couple hours, I was like, I've never said so much about this. You know, she has such a good listening ability. She hears people, and it's an amazing gift, really. And so, John, I'll be coming by the house for my sessions. You know, I don't see you leaving. I see like what Jenny had said, that, you know, you're going to still be involved, it's just on your own terms, which I'm not sure, it was on your terms before. You'll be missed in that office, for sure. Not anything personal, but...
Well, you're still there. You're still there, so that's a good thing. I'm gonna definitely miss it. It's gonna be hard. What I do now in the community, I'll bring him with me.
That's right.
Yes.
And we'll jitterbug some more.
Yes, we will. You still need to have a book.
So last time I couldn't do this, I think I'm gonna be all right, 'cause Roger didn't read his weepy resolution. You know, when I started here four and a half years ago, I remember coming before I actually started, and I brought donuts. And like, nobody ate the donuts. And I think you actually ate a donut to like, just make it be like, I'll eat a donut for your sake, Sean. I've worked with, I don't know, four or five different other town clerks, city clerks, I've never worked with anybody who's as easy to get along with, as helpful as you've been, and the just personal counsel. Thank you for everything. So I hope I'm gonna be able to keep it together by the end. So we'll go ahead and get started with that.
So Cricket.
Yes.
Jenny and I were recently elected. This was 11 months ago. And so being new to the office, there's some catching up to do from a historical perspective, right? So there's many issues that we deal with today that had their roots many years ago. So it's important to have a good resource of that historical knowledge. And that's what I've leaned on you for, and you've been excellent to me. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Well, you've been a great council.
Cricket, you have just been an amazing person to work with. And I'm relatively new to working in the public. And having you there for us has just been an amazing, amazingly wonderful thing for me. I could not have even done it without you. Every step of the way, from should I run? And all the great bits of advice that you gave me in terms of what I might expect? And the good and the bad and the wonderful and our wonderful town. And... You are a treasure in our town. And thank you so much for every single second that you've spent. And I could go on and on. And I'm just so excited about your retirement, that you get to spend time with your family, that I know love you so much. And she's amazing. And the amount of years that you gave to our town is just incredible. And I consider you a dear friend who I hope we can remain in touch. And again, I'm just so happy. And thank you for everything you've done for me and for our town and just for everybody that you've touched. Thank you.
So you know that I love public speaking. It's not too much of a...
Yes.
We're behind the scene people. I just wanna thank you for all those years. I've worked with you just a few months as council, but many, many years through the chamber. And you've just been such a valuable part of Loomis. And I'm not gonna miss you because I'm gonna bring you over to the senior center. And we're gonna work together still. And we're still gonna go have some lunches together. And I'll call you if I have any questions. So I'm just so proud of you. Thank you for what you've done.
So I gotta say, when I first decided to throw my hat in this wonderful arena, and I served on the planning commission, you always were very good at advice. And now looking back at it, I don't know how I would have done it without you. And listening to the list of your accomplishments here within the town, I don't know how the town would have done it without you. Dealing with 27 council members, I don't know how anybody does that. I really don't. I mean, we've had some really good ones and we've had some difficult ones. And so I just look and the amount of... The amount of work that you've done for the town, you really do epitomize public service. The town is in the position that it is in because you have been there and have just been a stalwart champion for this town. So I can't thank you enough. I'm gonna miss your sassy emails to me and my very calm responses and your jumpiness in town hall. But I will see each other. But I really do appreciate all that you have done for me personally as a council member. So thank you.
I gotta tell Cricket, oh, what's the line? You know, she could be a psychologist. Because I came in to this, like Brian said, the planning commissioner. I became a planning commissioner and I would talk to her all the time. But I started talking to her about my past history in prison. And she would listen. And then after a couple hours, I was like, I've never said so much about this. You know? She has such a good listening ability. She hears people and it's an amazing gift, really. And so John, I'll be coming by the house for my sessions. You know, I don't see you leaving. I see like what Jenny had said, that you're going to still be involved. It's just on your own terms, which I'm not sure. It was on your terms before. You'll be missed in that office, for sure. Not anything personal, but...
Well, you're still there. You're still there. So that's a good thing. I'm gonna definitely miss it. It's gonna be hard. What I do now in the community, I'll bring him with me.
That's right.
Yes.
And we'll jitterbug some more.
Yes, we will.
So last time I couldn't do this, I think I'm gonna be all right. Because Roger didn't read his weepy resolution. You know, when I started here four and a half years ago, I remember coming before I actually started and I brought donuts. And like, nobody ate the donuts. And I think you actually ate a donut to like, just make it be like, I'll eat a donut for your sake, Sean. I've worked with, I don't know, four or five different other town clerks, city clerks. I've never worked with anybody who's as easy to get along with, as helpful as you've been. And the just personal counsel. Thank you for everything.
I don't know what it's gonna be like coming into work every day without you there. From, you know, it's been 14 years. And every morning, we say good morning. We share what's going on in our lives. We talk about work stuff. But mostly, we just share human experiences. And you don't often find that, especially in... A lot of times workplaces are just a little bit sterile. You make a difference. You know, whether I'm coming in and we're talking about the kids, whether I come in and we're talking about the chaplaincy and we're talking about what's going on. You've been a kindred spirit. You've been one of those dear friends I never knew I needed. And I got the gift of having this friendship. It's the strangest thing to be sitting at your desk. It is the strangest... But you know, the thing she did tell me, though, was that I'm now the oldest employee.
That is true, because I was.
I'm taking her spot. All you kids, you have such a blessing for a mom. She makes a difference to all of us. She makes a difference to the community. And you guys are the light, you grandkids. You guys are a light of her life. I can't express my thanks to you all for sharing your mom with us. Cricket, I'm gonna miss you.
I will. Thank you.
So this is really hard. Cricket and I go back all those three years.
Oh, yes.
And I've watched her grow in her job. I've watched her feel insecure in what she was doing to what she is now. And everything that's been said, I couldn't say it better. We've watched our children grow up together. We have experienced a lot in this city together. As I went on and did different things in my career, Cricket remained my city clerk. I contacted her from every city that I was in, asking her, do you remember this? Or can you give me a copy of that? Remember when I did this? And she was always right there and provided that information to me. Cricket's one of my favorite people in the world. And I think that this town has been more than blessed to have you. And I've been blessed to have you as my...
I'm gonna lose it, so I'm gonna make this really short. I was gonna take my sock off and make a puppet. But my socks are black and that was gonna be kinda weird. But it was gonna say, "Don't call me Charlene." No. And then, "You're so funny." That was my favorite phrase. "You're so funny." Cricket says that at least once a day. "You're so funny." And she makes me feel funny. Anyway, I booked my Parma hotel. So call me tomorrow. We'll figure it out.
We'll do that.
I don't know.
Well, out of seven kids, even though I may not be the most favorite out of all of them, I am the only one that has been able to work with his mom for 17 years. And it's been amazing. And I've had the opportunity to get so much help from you through the years. You know, I've got you on speed dial on my office phone. And I've always been able to call you and get an answer for anything and everything. And I can't tell you how much you've helped me through the years. And I'm gonna miss that. And I love you.
Anyone else, feel free to come up and say anything. It's hard to top that last one.
I'm gonna stop right here. Sure everybody can hear me. Well, probably everybody knows who I am, but I'm Miguel Uchvich. And I've had a great opportunity to know Cricket. I was on a group that formed the town. So I knew Cricket when she came and started with the town of Loomis. I was on the planning commission a couple of years. And then I was on the town council for 20 years. And that's when I really got to know you. I mean, you're so great, really, seriously, folks. As was mentioned before, she was more of a friend than I looked at. If you had an idea, ask Cricket about it. And she'd give you the pros and the cons and then basically say, do what you think is best. We've had some great time. Cricket always went to, I believe, the California Cities Conferences. And we had a great one one time. I just thought about that one. I won't go into a great detail, but a couple of us, late in the evening, were out at the Sueing Pool and had a great discussion about town government to the point where a couple of people on the second floor said, hey, why don't you guys go to bed? So... But one of the great things that I will, I really wanna thank you for. I had an idea, hey, let's have a concert in Loomis. And the council said, oh, we don't have anybody can do that. And Cricket volunteered, said, I'll take care of that. And you did such an outstanding job, Cricket. That's been one of the highlights, I think, of the summer in downtown Loomis. And it was all because of you. You got the bands, you got the advertising, you and John got the watermelon. It was really great. But you know, the thing most impressed me, as I said earlier, is that I never thought of you as a town employee. I just thought of you as a friend. And you did just a fantastic job. And as mentioned, anybody had a question, you always got the answer. So have a great time. And it's so nice to have you work for the town of Loomis. Thank you again.
All right, well, if no one else wants... Oh, Mary Beth, okay.
Yeah, let me say a quickie before I head that way. I haven't had the opportunity to know you as long as everybody else has. But my loss is probably gonna be greater. You're the best town clerk I've ever known. Your attention to detail, spot on. I know where this is, that is, and that, I don't know. It's been a pleasure to be part of your team.
Thank you, Mary. This is great. Yes, we do. My turn. What can I... Every time I start to talk, I'm sorry. This is just so hard for me. I'm gonna miss you all. This isn't the kind of thing that I've been so anxious to go retire and go do things. It's been really, really hard. And it's because of the people I work with. That's the whole thing. I've got a great council, great staff, great citizens and people I know from the past. This is amazing. And I'm gonna miss you all. But I'm gonna try to be involved, do what I can. I love you all. Thank you. Thank you so much for this.
Well, let's recess to have a... Any cookies?
I'll try and notice later. I'll have it when I'm ready.
How are you doing?
Doing all right. How about you?
Good, good. My daughter got married on Friday, so...
Congratulations.
Thank you.
To her also.
Thank you, yes. So I'm a little exhausted, but other than that, just so grateful and happy.
Was that here in Loomis or in the area?
In Gold Hill Gardens in Newcastle.
My secretary's daughter was just married.
Oh, is that...
It's in Newcastle.
Nice.
So I wondered if it was the same one.
Well, there's the Newcastle Gardens, which is right off Taylor. And then this one is like back off of 193, up in the hills. And they're both beautiful venues. So I mean, that's a beautiful area.
I know they're placeless. Megan's daughter was married in.
Yeah.
The pictures I saw of that one.
Well, my gosh. So she got, Megan got married on Friday. And there was a wedding here Friday, Saturday and Sunday. And actually, I think it was Thursday.
Well, I have heard that there was quite a battle.
Yeah, Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday.
So many people were in there after the pandemic.
Yeah, right.
Could've spent hard time there.
Right.
But good, good for her.
Yeah, yeah. We're excited.
Are they in the area? Live in the area?
So it's kind of interesting and obviously a little complicated. He's a CHP and he's out of Ronan Park, but he's heading for transfer. So we're gonna find out Friday whether she's moving to Ronan Park or he's gonna move closer to here. Or they might be moving to Leighton or they might be moving to, you know...
And Ronan Park's a little bit of a...
Yeah, it is. So, yeah. So there's gonna be, you know, that's just gonna be about as big of news as anything. So on the way here, she posted something on Instagram. She's working. And she posted on Instagram with her new name, Megan Dicer. And I was like, my gosh, you know? It was so cool. I was like, oh my. Yeah, so she's ready to start her family and so excited. So finally found a really nice guy, which was super kind. And I mean, I'm thrilled, so... Yeah. Yes, yeah. And his mom is amazing, too. His whole family is. But his mom is super, super nurturing and very... She always looks at that, too. Got it. That's right. And I'm so, like, begging.
...
I'm sorry. 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 Okay. Yeah. I'm sorry. I have to stop. So, I missed her. I just said, uh, I don't know. I think it's... I'm sorry. I'm sorry. And... I didn't see her for one second. What did I do? But, I just... I was... Yeah.
I just wanna say hi real quick here. Beer real quick, and then I gotta go, my kid's got a van, thank you. I went, I went and said hi while I was here and I saw ya. Yeah, it's been, it has been a while. I was actually just gonna show up for the meeting online, but then she had her thing, and I was like, oh, I should probably come and say hi to her kid.
Nice.
Yeah.
This is the final, I didn't think this was gonna happen, I was so surprised, nobody knows. And that's just... Well, Michael, I... I like it. I love it. I love it. Um, but, I don't need to, I don't need to do it. I love it. I love it. I love it. This was 10 years ago. I guess. Wow. I love it.
Cookies are gone to their left. Somebody threw out the cookies.
Regular town council meeting to order October 12th, 2021 at 7:04. And let us pledge allegiance again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Here.
Councilmember Clark Kretz?
Here.
Councilmember Nysley?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Mayor Duncan?
Here. Okay, the public comment procedure, Sean will explain how that will work tonight.
Yeah, so tonight's meeting is in person and also through Zoom. We have folks in the town, excuse me, in Train Depot here during public comment, they'll get up and speak. We also have, if you're on Zoom and you want to provide a public comment, you'll just hit the Raise My Hand button down at the bottom of your screen, and that'll let us know that you need to speak, and then we'll turn your microphone on. If you're on the phone, calling via phone, you'll hit star nine, and that'll turn your, that'll let us know that you want to speak.
Okay, thanks, Sean. Now's the time for matters of interest to council members. Seeing none, we'll go on to the town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, a couple of things that I just wanted to briefly talk about here. We just held our reception for outgoing Administrative Services Officer Cricket Struck, who worked for the town for 33 years, so that was nice to have. Still remains as the elected town clerk until she decides to not run or is challenged. First thing I want to talk about, though, loitering at the Train Depot. I'm sure you all know, and members of the public have also noticed, that we have several young adults that hang around the Train Depot near Webb Street during the evening. Those folks have started vandalizing the parking lot, doing burnouts on the asphalt and in the planter beds, breaking fences, leaving a large amount of trash behind. They also apparently started a fire in the parking lot a couple of weeks ago. They've also started causing serious safety concerns by racing through the parking lot, blocking out the end of the lot, and preventing people from leaving freely, and creating just a general uninviting area of the town that's close to our downtown businesses. I want to let you know that we've been in contact with the Plaster County Sheriff's Office to address those issues, but it seems like the criminal activity isn't happening while the deputies are present, which kind of just is, of course, that would happen, I guess. So, we're going to be putting up no loitering sounds, signs, excuse me, no loitering signs around the parking lot so that the Sheriff's Office can move those folks along and keep them out of the parking lot. Just before the council meeting started tonight, we had this same thing happening again. So, we do have a couple of deputies parked out there now, but if they get pulled off on a call, then I would imagine that something will probably end up happening. If you're a parent of these guys and kids, women, that are out there, and you see that they're out there, can you please let your people that live with you know to not be defacing public property? Because it's becoming a serious concern of the town. Town Talks returns to promote civic engagement in the age of COVID. So, the town's partnering with the library to create an outdoor evening Town Talk series to safely give our town a platform to discuss topics we care about. The first Town Talk is going to be on housing. The program includes a representative from Secog who'll present on state housing law changes. We're going to have students from Delaro High School debate short topic prompts on housing. And then we'll also have a moderated panel with local folks and planning and design professionals, such as Jack Patton from Williams &amp; Patton, to start the conversation about what kind of housing we do want in Loomis. We're hoping that this conversation is a first step in establishing some design guidelines for housing in Loomis. That first one is going to be held November 3rd. It starts at, I think, 5:30. But we'll have details on the website when everything gets formed up. We haven't had any new progress or new information happening on Costco or on the Hidden Grove project. I'm anticipating, though, that we'll get the formal application for Hidden Grove, either sometime this month or early next, and that'll start the process of us working through the EIR and getting that project ready to come before Planning Commission and Council. Nothing new on the Green Business Park as well. We're still waiting to get that formal application. Wanted to talk about a couple of staffing changes, though. So, with the retirement of Cricket from her staff position, Carol Parker has moved into deputy county, excuse me, deputy town clerk position. So, welcome to our official. Sarah Jennings has moved from the administrative clerk position to planning assistant, so she's working with Mary Beth in the planning department. And then we'll soon be hiring for an administrative clerk position to fill the vacancy created by Sarah up in the front. Staff hire anniversary is our planning director, Mary Beth Van Vorus, has been here for three years as of the 15th. Best three years of her life, she told me the other day. And then Town Manager Tuesday is going to be held again on the third Tuesday of the month, 9:00 AM here at the Train Depot. That's all that I got. I can answer questions if you have questions.
All right, thanks, Sean. Does anyone have any questions, Sean, in council? All right, thanks again. Loomis Chamber of Commerce update.
All right, I guess that's me, everybody. Hi, everybody. Frank Advarhili here. Good to see everybody. Eggplant Festival was a hit. We had over 80 vendors, and I might have noticed it was a little light on food. Every event right now has been difficult to get food vendors, so if you know anybody. But the good part is, is the guests who showed up to the street fair were able to frequent our restaurants. So, all the restaurants in town got a nice bump in revenue that day, so it was a win-win all around. But I do want to commend Jenny for all of her wonderful hard work of teaching me how to put on the festival. So, next year, hopefully, it's half as good. But yeah, other than that, Chamber's positive. We're always looking to grow members, updating some things to be a little bit more digital-friendly, and put Loomis Chamber on the map. So, any questions? Obviously, you know where to find me, so I appreciate it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Frank. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, but I would like to just also say thank you to the staff that worked that day. I'd like to say thank you to the staff that also worked that day. They did a great job in helping make everything smooth.
I wanted to say, I went to the festival and I was so impressed. It was, I thought it was, you know, amazing. We had so many artists and vendors this year. I thought was really, really wonderful, and I talked to most of all the vendors, and they had such a great time. And the people that I saw that attended it were super happy to be back out there. So, great job on both of your, I know you both worked really, really hard, so it was evident.
All right, thanks, Jenny, for that, and Frank, as well. I know I spoke to a representative from Pioneer, and they had a booth here, and they said that it was a great time. Had a lot of fun even working it, so thanks. Thanks for your work. Okay, now is time for public comment for items not on the agenda. This time is reserved for those in the audience who wish to address the town council on subjects that are not on the agenda. The audience should be aware that the council may not discuss details or vote on non-agenda items. The council may refer your concerns raised during public comment to staff or place on future agenda. Please note that the audience will be allotted time to make public comments on any item on the agenda at the time that it is heard. All right, I see a familiar face. Go ahead, Jim.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and council members and staff. I'm here to, this evening, to talk about the redistricting effort for Plaster County Board of Supervisors. I don't know if you've seen any of the maps yet. I brought three of them, and I'll be glad to pass them on to the, what's she now? She's an assistant clerk? Deputy, all right, and I'll pass them on to you, and then you can make some copies for everyone. So, first of all, we have three alternatives. Draft map, alternative A, which will be presented Thursday to the Planning Commission at 6:00 PM for their first. The Planning Commission is the redistricting commission, so they will be having a first look at comments on the redistricting process. So, draft map, alternative A keeps Loomis whole, but you will have, you know, as you do now, have Rockland. You will lose, you won't know, it's pretty much the same. You'll have English Colony, Penrin will be in District 3. Horseshoe Bar area will be in District 3. Newcastle will be in District 3. Much of Ofer will go into District 5. But the thing that I worried about is it moves me out of my district. And so, my home in North Auburn will be in District 5 under this, under this alternative. So, as you must probably know, I'm not so supportive of that. And so, I do have a couple of Planning Commission's members that I've talked to, and they understand the issue. Draft map, alternative B, keeps Loomis and Rockland. Rockland will pick up some of District 2, which is, you know, Whitney Oaks', that area will come into District 3, Rockland. But English Colony and Penrin, Newcastle will go into, believe it or not, District 2, which is in Lincoln. And again, Ofer will be in District 5, as will my house be in District 5. It's important to keep Penrin, Newcastle, Horseshoe Bar, and Ofer in the same district, as far as I'm concerned, because they all are rural, and they have the same issues as far as growth and the type of impacts that they have. And I spend a lot of time in those areas, as I try to do here, is to make sure that I understand their issues and as we move forward, I have knowledge about how they're, what their concerns are. So, again, that's not my favorite one. Then we move to draft map, alternative C, which was put into a discussion after I had a lengthy conversation with county council, because there were only two alternatives. And just alternative C was not one of them. It is now. So, that keeps Newcastle, Penrin, Loomis together. It keeps the Ofer area together, and it keeps me in my district. So, that's important, because I do plan to run for another term. And if they move me out of my district, I'll be in District 5, and I'm not going to run for District 5 supervisor. So, anyhow, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Again, the Planning Commission will meet Thursday night at 6 o'clock. That'll be their first hearing on this. They'll open it up for public comment. And then November 4th is when the Planning Commission will make their recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. So, the Board of Supervisors has the ultimate decision-making power. But it's important that the voices of people in Loomis and Penrin and Newcastle and Ofer be heard. And that concludes my comments, and I'll be glad to answer any questions if you'd like. All right, thank you, and I will pass this on to the deputy person here. Do you know what your title is yet?
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Pam Blake, and I wanted to bring up what Sean had brought up about the loitering in the Train Depot here. And I did talk to a few officers, so it's not just coming from, you know, him. Because at one of the town council meetings when I left, well, when I came here, I couldn't get into the parking lot because they had it blocked. And then when I was leaving, they did set a fire, and that's when I went 911, and I called them. So, but I didn't hang around to see if they showed up or not. So, when I walked in today, I did talk to a few of them, you know, to let them know that I'm also concerned about that. So, and it was brought up last month at the town manager meeting. So, yeah, there is a problem there. I didn't know about all the destruction and defacing and stuff like that. I'm glad the Town Talks is coming back, so does that mean sometime soon the kids will be reading to the dogs? I just got my official vest in the mail Saturday for Linda Hard Pet Assisted Therapy, even though I was certified in January of 2020, and I'd been attending the library. But I just got the vest Saturday, so I'm raring to go on that. And my last thing I'm going to bring up is what I usually bring up with the Loomis mission statement. Number one, a quality of life in which families can grow and enjoy the small-town atmosphere. And then, of course, number five, a plan that calls for slow quality growth. So, I think that's it. And I still have plenty of time. Oh, and obviously, I'm voting for the, rooting for the Giants. When I left the house, they were down two to zip, so.
Oh, man.
Thanks, Pam. Anyone else in the audience like to make a public comment, or do we have anyone on Zoom? Okay. Now we have, have to adopt the agenda. Council will typically adopt the agenda in order listed or modify the order in a way that can best accommodate the people in attendance who wish to speak on agenda items. Speakers are requested to restrict comments to the item as appears on the agenda and stay within a three-minute time limit. The mayor has the discretion in a meeting to tell the discussion time for an item, so.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clark Kretz?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Nysley?
Aye.
And Mayor Jeff Duncan?
Aye. Okay, now it's an opportunity to comment on consent calendar. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered by the council to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion unless an audience member or council member requests otherwise, in which case item will be removed for separate consideration. Would anyone like to talk about any of the items on consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, need a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Anyone from the audience? Anyone on Zoom?
No answers.
All right, thank you.
Move approval of consent.
A second.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmaker, councilmaker. Councilmember Clark Kretz?
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Nysley?
Aye.
Mayor Duncan?
Aye. Got me on that one. Okay, now to the business at hand. WW Molding, 3800 Taylor Road Development Proposal Award.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I put together a real quick PowerPoint, just so I could show you a couple of pictures and to keep my thoughts kind of aligned. So, we're going to talk about the redevelopment proposal. Next slide, please. So, council gave direction for me, when I first actually started here in 2017, to look at divesting some of the town-owned properties. These are killing me. Hang on. These progressive glasses make me feel like I'm going to, like, fall over while I'm standing and reading, move my head around too much. So, the 3800 Taylor Road has been a particular focus. As you know, it used to be the WW Molding Plant ran for a little while since the 90s. It hasn't run as that, and it was used as a just general kind of storage place, tiny home place. There was illegal people living, people living on it illegally, and so the town cleaned that up back in 2018. Twenty, yeah, 2018. In 2019, the town entered into a development agreement, purchase agreement, with a joint venture of High Hand and Loomis Basin Brewery. But that agreement fell through because of partnership issues that couldn't be resolved between the two sides. Next slide, please. So, there's been significant interest in that property again since 2019 through 2020. Council direction during our strategic planning session in early 2020 was to look at bringing that back forward, reissuing a request for proposal, and seeing what we could get in terms of redevelopment of that property. We did that initial, that second request for proposal was issued back in June, and then the responses were due on September 17th. We had a 90-day window to make sure that we gave ample time for folks to ask questions, potentially get as many proposals as we could. And then we left, the RFP was left kind of wide open. We didn't really nail it down to any specific use, because we wanted to kind of cast the net as wide as we could, see what we actually got. Go back one more, please. So, we did get several companies that were interested in between 2019, 2020. I sent out the RFP to those folks. I met and talked to probably four of them. I met and talked to probably four of them. I think six total, or no, I sent it out to about 10 total, met and talked to four of them. I also sent it out to GSAC, to the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, asked them to post it on the GSAC website. I believe it was picked up again by Sacramento Business Journal and then obviously it was in the Loomis News as well. So ultimately, after September 17th, we had one proposal that was submitted. And that was by Brian Nelson of Stargate Properties LLC. He is the property owner of the former Star Liquor Building. He purchased that building with the intent to build Pine Star Brewery there, but he realized that that property's not big enough to build what he wants to build there. And so pandemic happens and now he's trying to figure out what he's going to do with that property, if he's going to sell it or change kind of path and build something else there. But his proposal, which is in the council packet, and I'm going to show a couple of pictures of that, meets the council's objectives from the strategic planning session that we had, which basically was to create a family-friendly destination that complements the businesses that we have around that area and all of Taylor Road and to create kind of like a bookend to that end of town next to High Hand as well. So his proposed uses, by the way, he was going to be here tonight, but he has two little girls, both of them have had a kind of a scratchy throat. He came down with a scratchy throat and decided that he didn't want to potentially infect anybody if he does get sick with something and so he decided to stay home. The proposed uses are, he's planning on moving and building the Pine Star Brewery on that site as opposed to where he was talking about before. Two restaurants on site with outdoor dining and activities area, including an elevated deck dining that would be off of one of the restaurants. Fire pits and gaming areas around that area. A ride that goes around the entire property, so starts at one end, travels all the way down to the parking lot and then comes back up. The pictures in the proposal look kind of like a train or a mining cart ride. So basically taking the kids from one end of the thing and wrapping it around. And then a large, fully functioning peloton water wheel that kind of brings in the mining and agricultural history of the community. His construction estimate is $2 million and he says that he's able to start construction immediately after the purchase agreement is executed. Those terms still need to be negotiated. In the proposal, he has draft terms, but council has not talked about those draft terms. It's the point of the upcoming closed session to start discussing those terms if you move forward with staff's recommendation tonight. And so those terms still need to be negotiated. If we do settle on an agreed terms, we could bring that back in the form of a purchase and sale agreement, similar to what we did previously with High Hand and LBB. So this is the site plan. You can see on the bottom left-hand side, actually, just on the left-hand side of the property. Yeah, thanks, Mary Beth. So there's a beer garden there. You can see the Pine Star Tap Room, the brewery, and then there's the restaurant deck. There's fire pits in between there. And then he was talking about doing either grass or some sort of maybe decomposed granite or some sort of gathering area in between that big empty space there. At the bottom below Pine Star Brewery, you can see the train ride platform. So that's where that starts and then goes all the way down and wraps up. Above where the, go back there. Above the ride station platform, you can see the deck and then the water wheel. So that would be, yeah, right there in the middle, that would be the second restaurant. And then you've got parking down on the, I guess, the south side? Is it all right, south? Yeah, I'm terrible with directions. Next slide, please. And this is the front elevation. So this is a conceptual elevation showing what it could potentially look like. Kind of keeps in with the fruit shed theme a little bit with the roof line there, but then there's also a little bit more modern in the front with all the glass. Obviously, this isn't gone through a design review and this isn't what he's formally proposing. He hasn't proposed anything specific, but this is sort of what he's thinking that the building will look like. This is a picture of something similar as what I think he would be planning on doing. So you can see the fire pits there with kind of the outdoor game and activity area for folks, tables for them to eat at. This looks like it was during some sort of a football game or something. Next one. So the staff recommendation to you tonight is to award the exclusive development rights of the property to Brian Nelson of Stargate Properties for a period of 90 days. The staff report doesn't call that out and I wanted to add that to the staff recommendation because we can't have it be an open-ended negotiation period. If things don't work out, then we want to be able to move on and figure something else out. So for a period of 90 days and pending completed purchase negotiations. And then staff would bring back the purchase and sale agreement once negotiations are completed within that 90-day timeframe. And that's it. I can answer questions if you have questions.
Okay. Questions from council, please.
Yeah, Sean, it sounds, it sounds like an exciting project and interesting to note that it is the gentleman that owns that Star Liquor, because I've been wondering what's been going to happen with that.
Yeah.
And I can see his thought process on, on the sizing issues. And so just, I am, I am concerned, I'm sure everybody else is too, about what's going to happen with that lot. But I do think that this has a lot of opportunity. So will tonight be the first day for the 90-day timeframe or?
Right.
How does that work?
Assuming that council, well, we need to, I need to get directions from negotiations from you after the meeting during closed session. But tonight would be the beginning of that 90-day period to, you know, get the negotiations wrapped up.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Well, it looks like a good idea to me, kind of just mirrors what we were looking at before. So I think that from our perspective on council, it sounds like we're all pretty much there as far as an agreement to that, but I don't know. Let's have some public comment.
Hello, Pam Blake again. My only comment, I just picked up the two packets, so I haven't had time to really look at it. But parking is a big concern to me because High Hand, their parking lot is completely full and then you have all these cars parked on Taylor Road going on both directions. Now, the plan that was up there did show some parking on the right and Sean said, well, there's parking over, maybe over on the right side. Well, I didn't see those little parking spots on the right side like I did the left side. And as you know, with Taylor Road being the main thoroughfare, it's, it's a busy street. So I'd like to see, you know, more parking to keep the vehicles off of, you know, Taylor Road just because of High Hand. And the other thing was, is this going to be an outright purchase? Because the last agreement with High Hand and LBB wasn't an outright purchase. Okay, it's valued at 1 million. We're going to go in, we're going to buy it for 1 million. You're going to get your 1 million now. What that was, was something, this was back a little ways ago, was like a five-year period, you know, and then at the end of the five years, it's like they would cough up the money then. And I didn't think that was, I could be mistaken, but I did not think that was a good benefit for the town to it being developed and then getting the money five years down the road. Well, what happens in five years down the road? Did the business exceed or did they go under like some of these other businesses like Devere's just recently, you know? So that's what I want to see is, that's my big question. When you appraise it and you figure out the money, does the town get the money right now, close and escrow and not somewhere down the road like the other agreement? Thank you.
Thanks, Pam. I did notice that it looks like it says in the parking area, 215 spaces, it looks like. Is that right?
I'm not sure how many spaces he's proposing, but he needs to meet the town's parking requirements. So whatever the requirements are is what he would build. What he drew is basically a line drawing sketch of what the proposal would be, not specific engineering or site plan. The issue about, to respond to Pam, the issue about the purchase terms, that's something that council's going to talk about in closed session. In his proposal, he does propose a similar structure on the purchase as what was done before. As far as how that benefits the town, it benefits the town because we get the property developed instead of it being the way that it is. They're able to put all the capital that they have into getting the building done and up and running. Town still gets its money at the end of the five years with interest, whereas if we purchased, if it was a straight-up purchase, we don't get the interest. So there's a financial benefit to the town to do that sort of an agreement.
All right, thanks, Sean. Is there any other public comment at this time? Do we have, no one's on Zoom?
No one else is.
Very good. No hands. Okay. All right, thank you. All right. So any more questions or comments from council? And I suppose we need a motion to?
You could have the motion just be, motion to approve staff's recommendation with the modification of the negotiation period to not exceed 90 days.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and second. Get a roll call.
See if I can get the names right this time. Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark Kretz?
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Nysley?
Aye.
Mayor Duncan?
Aye. All right, now that leads us to council committee reports. Does anyone have anything to report from?
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you, Jenny.
Just a couple of things. On the Placer County Economic Development Board, Sherry Conway, the executive director, accepted a position for the assistant Rockland manager. So they'll be having a special meeting probably. I asked her, she said they'll probably have a special meeting next month on that. And then Mayor Duncan and I attended the ribbon cutting over at Del Oro for the Measure D to see the state-of-the-art buildings that are over there. It's pretty amazing what they have over there at Del Oro High School. I'm pretty excited. And yes, for anybody just wondering about the radio that was in the woodshop room, it's still there. Same radio from 1988, but anyway.
Former students of Del Oro.
Former students, yeah. And then the library did have a special meeting where they did, the board did approve the resolution to, with the master gardeners to provide a garden on the town, on the town property by the library. So that was, was recommended and going through. And then lastly, Councilmember Cartwright and I attended our first county-wide homeless task force meeting and we have another tomorrow, so not much to do that, but we've been busy.
Good to hear. Yeah, that was pretty impressive, the tour of Del Oro. And what I was most impressed with, well, I shouldn't say this, but the welding shop was, you know, state-of-the-art and I was able to talk to the welding instructor and he's saying that they have students right out of high school getting hired right here in town. So, you know, it's an excellent program. I think that was really very good, so.
The welding instructor is a Del Oro graduate.
Oh, is that right?
Mike Paul, yeah.
Aren't they all? No. Seems like there's lots of teachers and, you know, from Del Oro, so. Okay, so now we are going to adjourn into closed session and are we going to come back and?
I'm not sure how long we'll be in closed session, so we can come out, we'll report, when we come back out, we'll report to anybody who does want to stick around and then we'll also report back out at the next council meeting.
Okay. Okay, we're adjourned to closed session at this time.